Well, I'll call this meeting to order. Just a reminder, tonight's Select Board meeting is a workshop on the 2026 budget. It's not a regular business meeting, so we will not be conducting the normal operations of business that we do in a meeting. But we will be back here a week from tonight to do so. Well, I'd welcome the Conservation Commission to come up first. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and we can discuss your budget.
Thank you. That's Susan Mulley, Conservation Commission Secretary, and Charles Smith, Conservation Commission Vice Chair.
Thanks for coming. All right, last one.
I'm going through one by one.
So could you explain to us that... It looks like from last year, there's a $75 increase in your budget request for this year? Would you like to update us on, I guess, what has happened in 2025 for your plans for 2026?
Yeah, would you like us to go through line by line? Because it's still a very dynamic topic.
Absolutely.
So, line 305 is pretty much a placeholder. I understood years ago that anybody that had postage item in the budget would be able to mail things out according to business. But it was just a placeholder. Printing was up to $100 because we had a printing expense at the end of this year, which I'll explain in a minute. Line 307, $725, of which $325 has already been paid to the National New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions. However, we still have $400 that was just paid in dues that's not reflected here. Selt, Southeast Land Trust, Forest Society, Bear Paw, and Lamprey River Advisory Committee for all $100 each. Let me see. On line 308, that number in bold, 100, was moved down into miscellaneous for an expense that was incurred. It still needs to be taken care of. So that left a balance of 200, however, where am I? Yes, conferences, however, we have a member who's attending the...
New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission's annual meeting, and that'll be another 60 we move from that line on.
Right, and then in addition, a member of the Trails Committee will also be attending.
Oh, really?
Tom had indicated that he was going to.
Oh, I thought he said he was not.
I thought he said he was going to.
Next year.
Oh, anyway, there might possibly be a second person. And that varies from year to year depending upon people's schedules and who can and can't go and what the workshops are and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, some years we have quite a few people that go to attend conferences.
Right, so that amount will be reduced as well from an expense that'll be incurred at, I think, the first weekend in November. The Conservation Commission did vote to reimburse Sam Demerit for that at our last meeting since he's already paid for his registration for that. And then just going forward, normally there is a saving special places conference in the spring as well that usually at least one or two members attend. And again, that's a full day of several tracts of workshops related to mans and conservation.
On publications line 309, we removed $200 from that and dropped it down to miscellaneous to help pay for an expense that's coming up. I don't think we have anything for this year proposed for mapping.
No, no, we discussed that at the last meeting and we didn't because the cost specifically of getting maps done is out of our budget range. Even if we put something in for 100 bucks, that's not going to cover getting maps like what we have on the hall done.
Line 311, we have not used that line recently, however, we anticipate getting a river sign for the Potackaway River on 156. That's a New Hampshire protected river.
And that amount is a quoted amount to get that sign made?
Let's see, Trail Development, 150, we spent 75, and so we anticipate maybe another 150 depending on what the needs are. B benches, trail maintenance, signage, replacement signs. Office supplies, I think that's a placeholder pretty much, either that or memo paper.
Yeah, it's usually a ream of copy paper.
Yeah, for the secretary. Equipment is $10, another placeholder. Mileage, 35, when we go to conferences, we would put in for mileage for that. Just coming back and forth to meetings doesn't count.
The mileage will just about cover Sam's mileage to and from the conference at the beginning of November.
For the water testing maintenance supplies, we had anticipated spending money for a new pH meter for the river testing program that we participate in. However, every River Advisory Committee came up with a grant and they were able to gift this new piece of equipment for us. So we removed $300 from that and moved that also into the miscellaneous category, line 317.
But we are keeping $300 in there for the budget for next year because we do have, all of our equipment that we use for river testing is aging. We've got some issues with our turbidity meter and the salinity and water temperature dual meter that we have has some serious issues. But that's a fairly expensive piece of equipment, over $300 for that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Measures dissolved oxygen and turbidity.
Yeah. So the bottom line for what we...
Yeah, that's okay. So for just, so for this year, you have 350, but there was a grant that covered that?
Yes.
So are you going to spend that this year on additional?
We moved $300 out of that budget line, so there's $50 remaining in the budget line. We moved $300 out of that budget line for the expense that we'll talk about in a minute.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
There was something else I was going to talk about. I think not.
Is it something about printing?
So, the explanation for the $600 in the...
Oh, yeah, that's it. Do you want to do that?
Nope, you can, you're more familiar with it because you're on the Trails Committee, I'm not.
We recently put together a book which is now available, a guide which can be purchased in the department or at the library called Explore Nottingham Outdoors. It costs about $8 to publish a single copy. We're selling them for 10, so the overage will help reimburse the person who put this expenditure on their credit card. It was $1,700. So to offset that MasterCard bill, the $600 in the miscellaneous column will be dedicated to that person when they bring in the bill. And then from the sales of the books, he will be reimbursed up to his expenses. And then the rest of the money will go into the general fund earmarked for Conservation Commission.
That's the plan.
Would anybody, should I get this to you to pass it around? Will that be a diversion?
I looked at it earlier, but I'm planning to pass it.
All right, Steve. You can't keep it though, it's mine. I paid money for it.
And we had voted on that, these moves and transactions at our last Conservation Commission meeting as well as approve the reimbursement when that comes in. So as soon as this individual brings it into Betsy, then that can be.
So that's pretty much it. We are asking for a little bit more than we did the year before, mostly for the sign for the Potackaway River, protected river.
That was like in last year's budget, I believe.
Well, there was some confusion.
Did it get cut out by the budget?
It got put into the wrong category somehow. It was supposed to have gone into a signage budget, but it didn't.
All right, I remember talking about it last year, so.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, it was, there was, because the river sign was actually zero in the budget for this year. So there was supposed to be money in there for the sign.
So, so what would you have in miscellaneous?
So what? There will be nothing in miscellaneous for next year.
Okay, so it's this year's stuff you're moving to miscellaneous?
Yes, and we did that just recently.
All right, that's, I was a little, all right, now I understand. The expenses are coming out of this year's miscellaneous to pay for the book, and then the revenues will basically come in.
Offset, yes.
Offset, the balance of, put it on their own personal card.
Then do you think you'll have money left over in the budget?
Sure, money left over, yeah.
Do you think you'll have money left over in the budget this year?
Let me see, we won't have any money left over for line 307. We'll have 140 left over.
307?
Conferences. 307 is dues, that's...
Right, so that one should be the 725 because it looks like you have two more $100 ones to pay.
Yes, yes.
There were more than two, wasn't there?
No, there were four.
There was four total.
There were four total.
There were four $100.
So they're at 525 now, so they must have two left.
And you have a more updated expenditure report than they do. I think theirs was only updated through August 30th, and this one's updated through today.
Yeah, so it shows that 525 was already expended in the dues, so you must have paid two of those.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I don't have that.
Yeah, we didn't see that.
We didn't see that new one.
The dates are different.
It was cut out of the press as of like 3:30, so.
Cut out of the press, okay.
And as I said, the conferences...
Would be 140.
Yep.
But that varies from year to year depending on how many people go to the two regular conferences, the spring and the fall.
There might be a small balance left in the conferences, but if both of our, both people attend, that will use up all of that and then some.
Okay, so. So the publications, you're at 600, that includes that book?
No, no, no.
Nope.
The 200 went down to miscellaneous. We could have taken it out of publication line, but in meeting with Betsy and with Ellen, this seemed to be the cleanest way to go.
It's miscellaneous.
Correct, miscellaneous, and then just deal with that line.
Sorry, so that, the book is 600 for the guys' credit card?
Actually, more than that, 1,700.
1,700.
Yeah, man, more than that, 1,700 and change.
Okay, 17K-ish. And then, all right.
That's 17,000.
No, that is 17,000.
Oh, 17, I'm sorry.
17,000.
Sorry.
They'd be very exciting.
1,700, yeah, um, thank you. All right, and so there's basically cost $8 each, and you're selling them for 10, so you make $2 per book.
And $2 per book until that goes back to the individual that paid out of pocket to get these published.
How many did you print?
And then anything after that will go into the general fund with earmarked towards Conservation and Rec.
How many copies did you print?
250.
250.
Yeah.
I think some will be available at the library as well.
Good.
But for people who don't wish or are a little challenged by spending $10, they can just download the information on their phone for free.
It's not the whole guide as a PDF, but some of the information that's in there.
Yeah, you don't want to give them everything.
Trail maps and that kind of stuff.
Any questions?
Okay, for the time being.
Yeah, Mr. Jack.
Fine.
Thanks very much. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I think I lost my guard.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, don't forget, don't forget your book. I passed it to you to look at.
John was holding on to it. It's very nice.
Yeah, it came out very well.
Yep.
There we go, the tax collector.
And she has a separate memo that's in your packet because hers is another one that's part of the Finance Administration budget, so she's one of three parts of that department. So it'll start on line 42 on your budget worksheet. So it should be behind your agenda.
Good night. Let's come in the tax collector. Good evening.
Good evening. So, most of my expenses are in with other expenses with the offices, the postage, printing, all of that combined with other departments, but this is my breakout.
Okay.
So, I just went ahead and put a request for 3% cost of living increase for the tax collector and the deputy tax collector. Increasing our salaries from 15, 146 to 17, 232. The postage, I'm not really sure how much my postage is because Betsy, it goes through the system and I never see it. But, again, it, those have to go out. But the certified letters are all billed back to the homeowners when we send those out. So the requirement for certified letters are always for leaning, deeding, and balance checks. And we turn around and bill those fees back to the homeowner, so.
So those are offset.
Even though we pay, we get reimbursed, so.
But they're offset.
And then, printing, we do do the bill paper is 45 for 100, or for 500. Estimating that the cost will go up to 50, it actually hasn't gone up the last couple of years, but just so that we don't, we don't run short. I estimate it at $50 per 500, and so it's $6,000 in paper. The conferences, we do the tax collector. The dues for the tax collector, New Hampshire Tax Collectors Association, it's $25 each. And then the tax collectors call a conference for room, the conference itself is 625 for one attendee. And the registry of deeds, I left the estimate the same as the previous year. We didn't expend that much last year, but I just left it the same, just in case. The training and support, we have spring workshops, and so that would be $150 total for both the tax collector and the deputy. And then I also put in the new tax collector training because I'm not going to run again, so we'll be having a new tax collector come next year. And then the software licensing, that's my portion, an estimate of a portion because we don't have the actual rates yet. We will get them sometime in November. Avatar said it was going to go to 3% to 5% increase, so I just went ahead and estimated a 5%. I should have the bill in November and then we can tighten it up. So, we're gonna, so we're gonna need... I'm sorry. I printed the wrong paper, you guys have the right one. But the envelopes is for office supplies. I figure the envelopes are going to cost about $300. We're not doing the, we're not getting them printed anymore with the special Nottingham, we have the two windows. And then additional $100 for binders and file folders and pens and things like that. The mortgage research, I'm leaving it at 800, we didn't hit that this year. That all depends upon how many liens and deeds we have. In last year, we didn't hit that, so. I also do my leaning and deeding at the same time. Well, I lean, after you lean, then you do your mortgage research. You do your mortgage research for the deeds before you send out your deeding notices. So I do both my leaning and deeding researches at the same time, so we only get charged once. That fee is also passed on to the homeowner as well. So, and then miscellaneous, we have the, we had the online billing, and I didn't know where to put the invoice cloud fee of $50 per month. So, I just left it in the miscellaneous.
Is that per department, the iCloud fee?
No.
No?
It's just for tax collect.
Okay.
So I included that up in the software licensing interest.
If people like being able to pay their bills online.
Do you find a lot of people have elected to receive their bills online, like each year, no?
The cost for receiving e-bills for us is not that expensive. It was, the setup fee was, you know, like 250, I think it was. But going forward, it's not that, it's not that expensive just to have the e-billing.
But not many people are engaging, are signing up?
About, maybe about 200. I mean, we've sent out notices online, we, all Nottingham. One year we put stickers on the back of every single bill that said that they could, you know, pay their bills online or get their e-bill. And they're just, they're just not doing it. But they all, everybody is, a lot of people are doing payments online. The fact that they can do an ACH check for 95 cents is the reason why people would do it. Because, you know, to pay your tax bill, that's $29.50 per thousand. So most people don't want to use a credit card, but the e-check is only 95 cents.
Did you say 29.50 per thousand?
2.95%. People think 2.95%, that's not too much, but when you're paying a tax bill.
If you don't pay, if you don't, if you don't pay it that month.
But it doesn't matter because if you, if the late fees are only going to be for, they're not very much. For, if you look at how much your late fees are, you're better off not to pay with a credit card, just to write your check and be a couple dollars late. I tell people that too. The only thing I don't know is, we have, with the deeding that's coming up, we have some, I have some questions about how that's going to work. Would those expenses be in the tax collector's budget?
As far as like the recording of the tax collector's deeds or?
No, if they were, if there was, like, the whole thing with the Cedar Waters, the investigation and working that out.
Oh, okay, no. No, it's just, it's something that the assessor's working through, so that's part of his contracted services. And then if he comes through with a request to abate the properties, then it technically works out of the town's overlay that it budgets for each year.
Okay, it just flipped through my mind right now, I didn't think about it when I was creating the budget, sorry.
It'll just move from an accounts receivable to a non-collectible.
Okay.
Any questions?
Are you straightforward?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the only, right, so.
Thanks for breaking it out.
Yeah, the whole office supplies is more towards Ellen.
Yes.
So everything in office supplies is that Avatar paper, right?
Yes.
There's nothing else that gets lumped in office supplies?
Correct, yeah, it's just strictly the tax collect because anything generally for the town office, envelopes to mail the bills out or even the postage is billed out through the executive budget.
Probably, should probably add that note there.
So three quarters of this budget ends up being tax collect, and then there's a portion in there for the bookkeeper's salary and the treasurer, and then the audit, the other financial aspects.
Right, but I'm just thinking we should probably add a note in that Avatar, in the office supplies, that it's the Avatar tax paper.
It's the paper, the envelopes.
And some books.
And some binders, file folders, whatever she needs. So it's strictly for tax collect.
And you did say you put the 600 for the iCloud.
Yes, it's under 55 software licensing, and I added it in the description.
Great, thank you. And the mortgage research is offset to the homeowners?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's probably OS. Well, no, because it's not all...
It becomes part of the lien amount, correct?
It's only partially offset, right?
Well, it is because, so it gets included in the amount of the lien, so when the lien gets paid, the town is made whole, but not until that lien is discharged.
Right.
So it could be several years, so it's not necessarily an offset in the year that we budget for it.
Right, okay.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy. Yes, the town.
We have a surprise guest.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
How the first few weeks solo going?
Good, just, you know, grant stuff, first time I ever did it, slowly but surely.
Great job with the Halloween event.
Thank you. You guys want me to go down line by line?
Sure.
Let's get to it.
Look at that. Two pages from the back or something. I just flipped your page together.
I numbered them this year.
Thank you. Don't help me.
Yes, you're welcome. Sorry, would you like me to say what we had last year or just go down for this year?
Um, if you have any updates from this past year that you'd like to add in, you can add that in, but you can definitely school over.
Okay, because there's really only three changes, so I'll go down.
Okay.
So for the rec salaries, it's 116,000. That includes Courtney and the rest of the assistant director's salary this year. Part-time, we aren't asking for anything because it's somewhere else, but 4,000 came out for the beach gate attendant that we had this year. $500 for postage, 2,000 for conferences. We've almost hit that this year, we will hit it this year.
Not the conferences in January?
Yes, yep, we haven't paid for the hotel yet, so we usually do that as well, we love going that one. Rec training, 700. So the next line is rec park, field, beach maintenance, this has gone up quite a bit. I think I talked with Courtney about possibly splitting it up into two separate lines, so it was clear. The mowing was staying the same, so 24,800. And then to add for part-time seasonal beach gate attendance would be 26,888. So I don't want anyone to think that we're going up double on mowing because we're not. And then, equipment supplies.
Wait, so you're looking to put the beach gate attendant in... Wait, so you're looking to put the beach gate attendant in this line?
Yeah, well, they wanna break it out into two separate.
I think that would be clearer.
Instead of part-time salary?
They got lumped together like all fields, beach. There's only one line item in the operating budget. They got one together over the years. So there was really no better way to. We should, we should create one just specifically for.
But to his point, yeah, so this year they put the expense in the part-time salary. It came from rec revolving? This year or did it come from the budget?
No, it came from the budget. It's under the part-time salary.
Yeah, so they're moving that into the beach. They wanna put that into the beach maintenance.
Yeah, sorry.
They're two different items.
Okay, so.
Beach maintenance and beach attendant.
And how much for the employee?
This past year?
No. Next year's.
Next year, so for four, this is.
Yep.
Different employees working seven days a week, eleven hours a day, I believe. It's twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight.
And we wanna have it stationed at the entrance gate?
What is in the, will we create a new line, like called beach attendant or something or?
Maybe just beach maintenance.
Beach maintenance. Then we could, we have like porta potty costs and water testing that could also go down.
Everything associated with the beach would be in that line item.
Okay, just seems kind of off.
So maybe keep that where it is and create a separate line strictly for mowing.
Yeah, that would work too. I just, mowing's been a hot topic. I don't want things, I don't want people to just misunderstand the line item.
Yeah, as we discussed before, I think it would be nice to separate them.
Yeah.
Might be nice to leave the beach attendants as a separate line.
Yes. So have it broken into three parts. It kind of all, you know, cause it is a salary.
Yeah.
So it belongs towards the top in that respect.
So put it back in line item two eighty-eight.
I think it probably don't, at least the salary part belongs there.
It is a part, well, part-time seasonal.
Right, it's a part-time salary.
I could figure out the other costs. I could separate it out into salary if you would like that.
Right, I think that would make, that to me makes sense to keep the salary part under salary. Mowing is a line item of its own is great because that gives it visibility. And then other beach maintenance stuff. But I mean, right, cause you'd still have the water testing, which is, um, so that's the beach water testing, not the water testing at the well.
Correct.
Okay, do we have that on here someplace too or no?
Um, I think it's included in the twenty-six thou- so I'd have to.
Sixty dollars per test.
Yes.
Right, and that's, that's fine to keep, but still as that title, uh, I think.
So it's twenty-six, two oh eight is what's proposed for the beach attendant. One hundred and eighty for the beach water testing and then five hundred for the beach lines, the signage, et cetera. So that comes up to the twenty-six, eight eighty-eight.
I'd have to probably see the porta potties too.
Do we need more equipment?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Is the, it's for the beach attendant, is that separate than the gatekeeper?
No, it's the same, it's the same person. We're just going to most likely try to move it to the entrance rather than having the person down at the beach. So that way there the attendant can verify that they're, they are residents of Nottingham before they go down. Number one, and then number two, so that that way there, we don't have one person way down there by themselves. So it's a safety, we're thinking a safety issue too.
That's a big change, but a good idea.
Yeah.
For the equipment piece. I don't think you need new beach lines unless you're trying to add more or something.
I think she probably put that in there just because sometimes we, we got them, what, two years ago?
Two years ago.
Yeah, I think it will eventually be an expense again.
Right, right, but I mean, it's not, it shouldn't be for this year. I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that what you're putting in there for money matches what your actual needs are.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I don't, I mean.
I think it's just generally anything that might be needed, like the signage, the equipment, like if they have to replace, if we have to do something more permanent for moorings for the swim lines or.
I think there has been signage that's been required that wasn't.
I know we probably need more signage down there.
Porta potties could fall into that.
I don't know. We need some coming, we need some coming from the lake.
Well, there is something, it just didn't get put up.
Okay.
Um, we thought the highway department had put it up. They picked it up at New England barricade, but there's supposed to be two signs that are on the shorefront that say that it's like not a landing zone or no access by water.
Cause yeah, those weren't up, so.
But those are done.
Those are done.
Paid for, okay.
So maybe we don't need more signage unless we need something specific.
Yeah, we might need something if it does end up being a gate attendant at the gate.
Right.
Or if it gets ruined. We've had that happen before too.
Picnic tables, is that something that?
Picnic tables, um, yeah, we had a volunteer fix them a long time ago.
I think they.
Yeah.
I think, I think they're originally built by the camp.
Oh, really? Oh, really?
Yeah. When Morgan, well, yeah, when Morgan was a camper.
So separating it, is that what?
Yeah, I think we can work on.
Yeah, we can do that.
Cool. Um, any more questions about that one? I do know that Courtney, um, was also worried about having some sort of shelter.
Needs to be something near you.
Yeah, just put somebody in a chair right there.
Yeah, so that may be an additional cost as well.
She had her little bug enclosure.
She did, yes.
But that was supplied by her. And her blankets, whatever it called it was.
Yeah. Okay, so next line, rec equipment supplies staying the same, thirty-seven hundred. Going down to rec office supplies, Courtney's asking for an increase just because costs have gone up for office supplies. Ink is really expensive and we print a lot of things. We do still print a lot from the town office when we're getting low too. Um, and then she also added eight hundred dollars for a new computer to have a workstation when you first walk into our office. Right now, the credit card machine can only hook up to my computer. So if I'm not there, it's just a longer process. It would just be nice to have someone sitting right there so we can register them and have the credit card machine there.
Didn't we, I thought last year we had budgeted for.
We replaced all the recreation computers.
Right, yes. This is a fourth, this is an additional one.
She had budgeted for it and then we moved it. We ended up doing it out of the, um, ARPA funds that were.
Right, we did a ARPA fund stuff to replace them.
Right.
Life changing.
So those are just the workstations?
Yeah, this is just one workstation right when you come in. Our computers are amazing.
We did end up with an extra one though.
Uh, right, we didn't get it. So basically you need something like that can act as a cash register that anybody could log into.
And we're trying to figure out if, if it would make sense to like repurpose one of the other computers if we wipe everything out of it. But then there's the question about the security because part of the reason for updating them was because, um, the operating systems, like eventually they just won't update. So if we're gonna be processing credit cards, even if it's through a third party.
Yeah, it needs to be up to date. Yeah, but I mean, eight hundred dollars seems reasonable enough.
Yeah, I think it's just for a mini computer, right? Just like that. Um, and then the next is rec mileage, which is staying the same. And that's it. The percentage looks alarming, I understand that, but the, I did the math and the beach attendants, you know, is almost twenty percent of the increase and my salary is eleven and the office supplies is about one, so.
No, I definitely recognize that the beach side of it is representing a huge increase that isn't necessarily, I guess, your choice, but it's necessary for, but, uh. And then last year we tried to move your salary into the.
Yes.
Just when the final numbers ended.
Yes, compromise, yes, every little bit.
So if it's ten percent this year, then fifteen percent, five percent over the next five years.
Yeah. Moving in the right direction.
What do you say about this?
That we're moving bit by bit.
To, to what?
To the general fund.
Okay.
Out of the rec revolving fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I have nothing else.
Any questions? Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
I apologize for omitting them from the.
That's okay.
Agenda.
We thought she was just a Budinsky.
No.
I thought she was just giving her moral support.
She was a Budinsky?
I said, I just thought she was a Budinsky.
I knew I shouldn't have listed them out. I was counting on my fingers and toes and all.
Chief guard?
Realize, Bridget, you weren't, you weren't on tonight's agenda, but you just weren't written on tonight's agenda.
You're a pleasant surprise.
Yes, especially, yeah. Thanks for butting in.
You butted in in front of me. Page, anybody?
One seven. Mine says page one. Make it a seven.
How's it going?
Fantastic. How are you?
Thank you.
Did you have a good hunt?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wanna start right at the beginning?
We can start at the very beginning, sure. Uh, right off the bat, I'm looking to increase the full-time salary. Don't know if this is the appropriate way to do it or if I need to go ahead and do a warrant article from manpower personnel, but going from six to eight in order to staff twenty-four seven.
Well, it's the right place to start.
I know the past two times we've done the increase, it's been through a warrant article.
The, the first time was necessary because we were shifting from the volunteer department to a full-time department, but, and I think the other one was just for justification. But I, I don't necessarily think that it is.
Yeah, my little opinions seem to indicate that.
Okay.
I, I had reached out to, just for transparency, I had reached out to the finance, um, specialist that works with New Hampshire Municipal Association just to kind of get her feel for increasing staffing on departments and that was her opinion is just, you know, if you're, if you're transitioning from volunteer to a full-time department, then you would want to create a warrant article because you're changing the status. But if you're just meeting the demands of a department and supplementing with additional staff, then.
Right, just like in the department.
I mean, it's nice to put it as a warrant article so it's actually in front of the people so they can see it and have full transparency. But that's my opinion, but not that, not that it doesn't mean that we can't do it this way. It's just.
I agree. I just think it's the.
I think it's cleaner just for the town to see that, but.
And so then obviously that would remove the.
Well, we still wanna talk about it in this budget because it's all part of that budget.
Right.
Whether it becomes funded through a warrant article or actual budget.
So if it got moved to a warrant article, would the budget stay the same or are you looking for an increase?
Would that line stay the same or the entire budget?
Well, no, just the salary.
Yeah.
Are you looking to increase the salaries?
No, no, I'm looking to add more, add two more personnel, right?
And the salary's staying?
Yeah, for now, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, full-time overtime would stay the same. You can see them over this year because we're down personnel. So the shifts are getting covered. Unfortunately, they're getting covered with full-timers. Part-time, looking to take the stipend for the part-time, the call members and put the stipend money into the part-time salary and pay everybody out of that. So everyone will be paid monthly or bi-weekly, uh, rather than once a year on a point system. They'll, they'll all be on a pay scale now rather than the point system.
So you basically just felt like an hourly rate?
Yeah, based on your certifications, right, okay. Based on certifications, that's what the, the pay scale rated at and then it's by the hour.
Sign.
Meetings, trainings, right, it all works off our reporting software. It tells us who was there and how long they were there as long as the reporting end of it's done correctly, so. Service contracts staying the same. Oh, that says zero, so I don't know. So we got to the stipend, the chief salary, the same mileage. Could you do that? Um, mileage, this year we didn't have anybody driving out to class in their own personal cars. They were using the utility. So mileage shouldn't get spent out, but that's what that's for. Postage, the same, we're about maxed out on that. Breathing apparatus, the same. See that there's what, thousand dollars in there? We have some new, uh, SCBA masks to buy for a couple of the new full-timers once they get fit tested. On the dues line. So the dues and then line one ninety-nine is hazmat. The check goes to the same people. They're both dues. Hazmat dues is the start team and the other dues is seacoast chiefs. So I would make that one line and bump it to the five thousand fifty-five. That's actuals. Training, training, keeping training the same. There were a bunch of classes that were free, but I got some guys going through, um, advanced, I believe inspector and instructor classes and some new guys coming in, so. Protective gear, up to fifteen thousand from eleven seven. Um, the price on everything's going up. Every new member, every new full-timer gets measured for gear. It's about seventy-five hundred dollars.
And so when they leave, the chances of their gear fitting.
Their gear fits somebody else. Um, it all gets recycled. No gear sits on a shelf and doesn't get worn. It's just when they get the full-time position, they get fitted, it, it's tailored to them, you know? Somebody that comes in on the call side might get something that's a little bit too big, uh, but it's all still within spec and safety wise, because we can't keep it.
I'm sorry, Matt, how much did you say it cost?
About seventy-five hundred dollars for a set of gear, helmet, boots, pants and jacket. Software licensing, the same. A lot of that stuff's been changing lately. We changed, um, dispatch changed their programming, which is gonna require us to buy into another software program that kind of links it all together. But in turn guts rid of, gets rid of another one of our software. So I think it's kind of a wash. Haven't seen the numbers on it. Vaccines and testing increased to five thousand. Again, new hires. Every time I hire somebody full-time, it costs me for physicals and. Uniforms and cleaning, that's part of their uniform allowance. So that'll be spent by the end of the year. Office supplies, we try to wait till the last minute and, you know, get the ink we need, the pens. I, we, we kind of scrounge till we know we can afford it at the end of the year. Um, office equipment, we need to replace at least three of the computers in the station for update reasons. Um, we can do one this year and if we go to, if we have the increase next year, we can replace the other two.
Is the Windows eleven?
I believe so. I'm not real computer literate, but that's what my, uh, my IT guy tells me.
So that two thousand by how many, do you know?
I believe there are eight, eight something apiece. So that'll, you know, that'll get the two. Uh, supplies and equipment, same thing, kind of waiting on the wishlist to the end of the year. Gas and diesel. I don't know what to do with that. We, we don't buy. We're not buying gas, so it's strictly diesel. We buy it all from the pump. That's actuals. I know before we were, we're buying rack, right? So I, I don't know. I mean, I. I know before we were, we're buying rack, right? So I, I don't know. I mean, that could go down. I'm not, we're not doing. We're not doing anything different. It's just the price of fuel, so if you want to feel good, you could. Vehicle maintenance, keep it the same. Um, this year it'll be about maxed out by the time we get the, uh, we got some pump issues going on on one truck. But everything else made it through inspection, and that's where we're at on that. The next equipment line, keep it the same. There's no, still no plan for hydrants. Radio maintenance. Um, keep the same, so we are looking to replace the base unit when we don't have to replace portal radios, because we got them all replaced for DeGrande. This year, that'll do about half of it. So what's in the line now, and next year combined, would buy the base unit?
Oh, so you're basically going to buy them at the end of the year, pay for them?
Possibly.
What's a base unit?
A radio that's at the fire station in the office, that's capable of dispatching. Telephone. Same, that's, um, that's not landlines, that's iPads and, right, all the cellular stuff, and the light packs transmitting. The internet line.
I think they got combined. They're just still split out on this, so even though there's expenditures on the internet, I think the phone and the internet for everything is in that telephone line.
No miscellaneous line. The hazmat line, like explained earlier, that should get moved to dues. Can be gone, and the forest fire line, looking to up five hundred. Um, I know we, that is spent maxed right now to zero, and I get to replace some more hose. Hose is about two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty bucks a length. We lost a few this summer, so. That's the fire department budget in a nutshell.
You have five full-timers right now?
I do.
Do you feel that you could hire three in the next fifteen months?
Yeah, I, I think it'll actually be easier to, to keep. So with a, I don't want to misspeak completely, but with eight, it's going to leave an overlap of three on two days, so it depends how we break it up. We could break it up with a daytime officer. Give some guys some direction. We could break it up with, um, inspectors coming in random days to help the town out, because we have a bunch of inspections going on in town. Um, it all depends on how we play it, but I think if you have the ability to have a third on, i- it's just the atmosphere changes. I think it's going to be a lot easier to keep keep people in, when it's full.
Okay.
It's a lot on, on the guys that are there now, it's like, they're just pulling overtime after overtime after overtime, like this I could see in the walls, but they're coming to work tomorrow. Um, just got to get spread out.
Yeah, it also allows them for vacation time and things like that, too.
True, yeah, because right now you got per diem, per diem, you don't own them. You can beg them and plead to come into work, but they don't have to, you know? If I got full-time guys, you know, I only have enough coverage for twenty-four-six, so you have to cover the other two, the other day or two twenty-four-hour shifts with part-time. Some days it's easy to come by and some days it's not. We just had two two accepted offers for per diem recently. We have another one going out for full-time, but it's constant.
I think it would be great to provide that.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot simpler.
I mean, as far as, like, the three, ideally, that would be, you know, that'd be fantastic to have three people on, like, in motor vehicle accident, they, they can do one, one or the other, you know, fire truck, is car on fire, or is they just trapped, you know what I mean? Is it a medical call or is it a fire call? Because the other end of that call is getting done by mutually, and that's just the way that it has to be. We don't have an ambulance one, right?
Yeah.
All together.
It's separate.
It's separate, it's, um, it's a special revenue fund.
Oh, alright.
Yes, it's.
Yes, that's sorry.
CIP stuff. SCBA compressor replacement to, for a warrant article. That would come out of the capital reserve. So I just want to call that up, just in case you need to talk about that and all.
Except for this year?
Yeah.
That was forty.
Enough money in there.
Right, right, exactly. The type of capital reserve, it's forty K.
It's a balance, isn't it, for?
I don't know.
I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me.
Fair enough.
Look that one up.
Fair enough.
What, what does the compressor do?
Fills air bottle tanks.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty important.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions?
So the only question I would have, will buying fuel at the pump?
Is in the Wex card.
Right, if somehow we could get another cube type thing at the firehouse and buy it rack pricing?
You could for the expenditure of the cube.
Might be something to look at, if you think you guys would be willing to do that.
Is it going to be a savings or?
That's only if it's a savings.
I, I mean, we're not paying, uh, we're not paying the price at the pump. We are getting a discount using the Wex card. That's the purpose of having it, but I, it's not as deeply discounted as the quarter over rack that we're paying now.
And then where do they have to go for that?
What's that?
And then where do they go for that?
Wherever is convenient.
Anywhere.
I think so.
Yeah, it's, it's at any pump, so it just depends on what they need to.
It has to be diesel and.
Right, Lee Circle is where we generally go, because it's diesel at every pump, it's in and out. You know, same thing with the ambulances, because it's usually the way back from the hospital.
And does Irving give us a discount?
I don't know that they do. I mean, it's, it's whatever, the Wex card. It's being part of that special purchasing power.
They don't give us a discount at the pump if we're using them for oil and heat.
I mean, you could use, you could get one of those Irving cards and they, they'll swipe it every time. I mean, I don't know what that'll give you, yeah.
But I mean, isn't that basically what the?
That's for rewards by the gallon, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but no, you made a good point, though, potentially about putting a cube in at the fire station.
Dollars and cents.
Right, right, no, it's a good, good question. It maybe makes sense to do that.
How much is a cube probably?
Five hundred gallons.
Probably getting bigger, too. But I don't think you'd need it.
Just that, right, so we'd have the expense of getting the cube and then whatever. Safety, safety stuff.
They didn't require much. The smaller cubes, they're double wall lined. Uh, that was a purpose they were just, set and forget. You didn't have to go through, um, any special EPA compliance or.
Maybe it's a reasonable thing to do.
You can always reach out to, it's not Hafner's anymore. Alright, no, it is Hafner's. You can reach out to them and get updated pricing.
Yes, it's worth a call.
Northeast or whatever.
Okay.
Anything else? Thanks, Chief, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez, I noticed you're in the audience, so I just wanted to mention, tonight's meeting, we don't have public comment or anything, okay, I just want to. I didn't want you to be here the whole time and find out at the end.
Good evening.
Page six. Page before.
Mine says page two.
That's probably not right.
Yours doesn't say page one, period?
It does not.
Police department is going to start on page six.
How's it going, Chief?
Good, how are you, Tim? Every, everything's going good, not down low. I gotta get my glamour shot in.
Say cheese, am I?
Oh, Jesus, cut it, anyway, um, should I go, you want me to go line by line? Is that, okay, so, uh, a lot of it's level funded.
You've only got this many.
I know, jeez, um, a lot of it, I, as you can obviously see, is level funded, but I will go line by line and, um, just if you have any questions, just stop me, I guess, because I'll just keep going. Um, salary line, um, obviously you see an increase from, um, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Um, I basically did, um, I, I put, um, like a cost of living reason there, so that'll be, I'm told that the new way that we'll do this, if I can speak about that, is that we'll just do it. I usually would do a review on an officer's anniversary date, um, but now I'm told we'll do it townwide, um, once a year on April. Does that make sense? Am I speaking right, Ellen?
You are.
Um, so I just put it right in there. I think it makes sense to do that. I know that we have a merit line, but I know that you guys have gone back and forth with that. Um, but I definitely think it's fair to give a cost of living raise, so I did that, um, and that's what I proposed for twenty twenty-six. Um, in that PD salary line, that's all of my officers and my administrative assistant. Um, overtime line, um, I left it at thirty, only because I'd like to increase it, um, but I'm cognizant of a tax cap, so I don't think I can increase it. I'm over it this year for various reasons. I can spell out why. I think I've talked to you guys about how those things happen. Um, you see that in other departments, you see it at the fire department and, you know, DPW, but that's that. If I can explain anything, if you need me to. That, um, next line, um, my part-time salary, I would still like to hire, um, a part-timer. I haven't hired, uh, as you guys know, obviously, um, that used to be, um, part-time position was filled by Officer Lemay, and then she went over, um, this past year and went over to full-time. And so just haven't been able to hire anybody, but I would still like to have that position. Um, having a part-timer does augment some of that overtime stuff. Um, and that's probably why we're over a little bit, and I'm confident that I probably could hire somebody. Um, it's still difficult, obviously, in these times to, to hire, um, but if you find the right, the right candidate, maybe somebody that, um, is already certified full-time and is looking for a part-time gig, you can find that sometimes in a retired person, so I'd like to keep that in there, so. Any questions on that? No, moving on. Um, prosecutor services, um, that's my prosecutor. It did go up. Um, she requested an increase. Again, just like last year, um, she is a fantastic prosecutor. I'm willing to pay that. You don't find very many prosecutors, actually, there's, she does like, you know, four or five other towns as well, and she knows the court, she knows the judges, she's really good, and I think that's fair. Um, postage, dues and conferences and publications are all level funded, just like training, um, and testing. Uniform, I mean, it's all uniforms and cleaning, software licensing. Am I going too fast? Service contracts, level funded. Office supplies, office equipment, gasoline, I, I didn't change it, although now I'm looking at it and we've already spent fifteen and there's only five left, um. I don't know, I mean, I think, again, because we have a cap, I play rush, roll the dice and just leave it, and you hope next year we don't pay as much.
With the, I'm sorry, just with the office equipment for this year, is, did you have to, any quotes on the server update that you need?
Yeah, so we, we, yes, correct. Do you want to talk about it, Ellen? I mean, yeah, we do need a new server.
Yeah, so essentially their server operates their department. It's very similar to the server that we just replaced in the town office, so we're looking at about seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, the life expectancy is obviously a lot longer than a workstation or hers, and the one that we replaced in the town office were about the same vintage. Um, so, you know, twelve plus years old.
Right.
What, what is the show, what do you refer?
The town server, so it's like the, the main computer that controls all of the workstations throughout the town office, and then there's one in the fire department, in the police department as well, that contains, that controls all their workstations, so it's, it's one central repository for all the data to be stored, backups.
Right, and just for transparency, uh, because I talked, I know that last time you guys were like, why didn't she know that? I was never told that back. They only alerted me to it because having, having to get a new server at the town alerted them to look at mine and said, oh, no, you also need one as well. And actually, looking through notes in full transparency, it was noted there, and I never knew it, years ago, when Gunner was there, that you need a new server. He never gave me that memo.
It's still working.
Knock on wood, correct, but, you know, but I.
Is that getting replaced this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to try to replace it.
Yeah.
This year.
So if we replace it this year, are we going to need that same amount? In the equipment?
She still needs to replace workstations, I mean, those are still on the same.
Okay, that's, I was just trying to understand.
Yeah, there's nothing to do with the server. We'll try to absorb that this year in my bottom line budget, because I think that's fair to do and safe. That make sense? Um, so then, I, I gotta put that in the CIP, though. What did you say?
About the server?
Yeah.
No, because it is.
No, because it's ten.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, it's fifteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, you're right, duh, okay, never mind. I walked that back, good. Not another worksheet I have to do, awesome.
Police station over the town.
The server is for the police station. We already did the one in the town office.
So then cruiser maintenance, I keep it the same, you know, looking real close, um, that's okay.
Be okay on gas.
Yeah, gas should be okay, I mean.
Yeah, because you're, you're fifteen-three and.
You, you know, math. Yeah, we'll just pinch it. We're gonna be good. Same thing with cruiser maintenance, I'll leave that the same, because I really can't touch it. Um, cruiser, that's again in my budget, um, that's the price of a new cruiser for an SUV.
For an SUV?
Correct, that'll be an SUV, yeah.
And they're basically, they were like fifty bucks different.
They, not yet, exactly, between a Ford F-one-fifty and an SUV, um, they're not very different pricing.
I didn't know which one was which. I just saw that the prices were a little identical.
Right, so right now we have three SUVs and two pickup trucks, and that's how we'll function, and I think that that's based on a lot of things, and I can go into detail, but, um, the trucks are very, very useful, they're very versatile, um.
I was gonna ask, well, I thought, I thought you were done, sorry.
No, it's okay, um.
Would it make sense to like, just alternate pickup, SUV pickup, SUV pickup?
I think it depends on which cruiser is coming up, um, for, for trade, you know, for trade-in, um. So that does include a trade-in. We'll get a trade-in for, um, is it a twenty twenty-one cruiser for next year? I will be trading in a, um, an SUV.
Okay.
Unless the town, you know, needs to repurpose it, like we, like we're doing this year, um, with the cruiser, but I mean, I, I guess, uh, it just all depends on what's coming up and what I just purchased, so.
Well, we just purchased both, so.
We did, because we had, yeah, correct, because it was a crash, right, so it was really wonky.
Yeah.
Um, right. But yeah, um, moving on. Uh, equipment, s- same thing, um, I did go over it, you can tell I'm already over it, um, but that, that was another, we've had some, um, things with cruisers, right? We had a motor vehicle accident, um, with a cruiser and a fire, and, um, when we got, um.
It's not normal.
Insure, yeah, I mean, again, you got, you gotta have a cruiser, um, and the insurance didn't give us as much, obviously, you know, the cruiser depreciated, so that's why that looks wonky. I, I, I normally wouldn't over spend, like, I mean, that seems ridiculous to me when I, when I saw it.
That includes like the lights and stuff.
It's everything, yeah, it's outfitting it, it's doing all that stuff, that, all, all that stuff is so expensive, um. But yeah, that's why that looks like that. I, you know, again, I think next year we'll be fine. I priced it all out to outfit the, um, the SUV if we get it, and I, I feel confident that I'll stay within that line and won't go over. This year, knock on wood, was a very unfortunate year. Um, same thing, ready to repair, telephone, internet, dare, community relations, um, and then obviously pistol permits is a different type of line, but that's all level funded. So. So again, you're only really seeing increases in salary, prosecutor services. And that's it. So two lines, and that's why it looks like that.
You still issue pistol permits?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. We, you know, we recommend them, it's, keeps everything on the up and up.
Nice to know.
Yeah, and it, again, it's good for reciprocity. Yeah, and it, again, it's good for reciprocity. If you go to another state and you get something signed by somebody, but you don't need, yeah, New Hampshire, you don't need one. It's, you know, it's not illegal to not have one, but we still do a lot of them, which, you know, is good. Um, and then, obviously, I would re, uh, warrant articles. I would recommend doing, um, the tech fund warrant article. That would be my, um, goal, like I have done in the past three or four years. Um, and then the warrant article to change the wording of the special duty funds, um, so we can better use the, utilize those funds and offset some of my costs within my budget. Um, which all other police departments do.
Right, so for twenty-six, you're looking for, uh, drone replacement out of the tech fund?
Correct.
Drone was used this year?
What's that?
Existing drone was used this year.
Yeah, a lot of ti- yeah, many, many times. Actually, I, and I just sent Corporal Everest to some really, really good, um, search and rescue training, so he's coming back all excited about using the drone and doing fancy things. I'm like, calm down. Um, but it's all good stuff, you know, and again, I, I told you guys about safety and why we would have it, and, um, it's, I'm really proud of Nottingham for having that. I think that's really innovative, um, and I'm, I'm proud of that, so. I wouldn't want to get rid of it, and I would want to replace it with that tech fund money and not obviously touching any thing from the budget, so.
Chief, do you think you're gonna get a new drone or?
That would be my, uh, goal, yes, would be to get a new drone in twenty twenty-six using tech fund funds.
How much are they?
Expensive, yeah.
Seventeen-five.
Correct. There you go. He knows CIP stuff.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Um, and then you're also looking for a warrant article for station, station replacement planning stuff?
Yes, anytime. Anytime that, you know, the board believes that that should happen, you know, I look for, I mean, I say do it in twenty twenty-six, but you guys are the deciders of what you think, what, what you can, right? What you can do.
What we can do.
Correct. I mean, we're all, we all understand the tax cap, right? I'm not afraid to talk about it, so it's hard to plan, you know, it is. It's very difficult, um. You want to move forward and you want to plan and set the town up the right way, but it's very difficult when you have that. It's a cap. So then, really, you're just looking at, like, you know, the here and now, right? You know, does that make, so you're just, like, really?
That's why it's a budget process.
Right.
You plan the best you can.
Correct. Yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Any major questions? Oh, and then I, um, I have the EMD budget I can discuss with you. Um, emergency management operating budget, so I will-
That's on page one.
Yes, exactly. Actually, mine does say page two. Um, so in that one, did you give them updated copy, Ellen?
AJ, yes.
AJ, okay, good, perfect. Thank you for that. Um, I will announce, I think it's important to say that, um, we will be working on a, um, emergency operation plan for twenty twenty-six. Our EOP is from twenty sixteen. Um, and that really opens up a lot of, um, grant funding that we can receive once we're in compliance, um, with everything. And, um, Ellen's been helping me reach out and get the ball rolling, and, um, I just submitted our application to get grant funding for it, so it's in-kind donation, so we don't need any money to do that upfront. Am I speaking correctly?
Correct.
Okay, um, so that's really, really important, and, uh, we'll start that, I think, in, uh, January or February. Yep, and, um, so anyway, so the only thing that I did change on that, if you can look at it, is any equipment, um, area, um, a- apparently, um, in speaking to Chief Curry, he was saying that, for whatever reason, his department was paying for all of the town's, um, AEDs. And, um, he didn't understand why, and I don't know why either. I mean, I don't know what that was. So in discussion, you know, during department head meetings, um, you know, we discussed, me, Ellen, and Matt, that maybe we should put it in, like, the emergency management line and just make it like that for, you know, because, you know, the police department has two, um, over here probably has a couple, I mean, there are at least one.
So there's the one that's like, right in the main hallway, which is, because when we did the tour, um, a couple Fridays ago, I was like, there's no AED in the police department itself, but I'm like, it's right outside.
Yeah, and we have, ours are, like, you know, mobile in our cruisers, so we take them with, obviously, because, you know, uh, he just, we're out there twenty-four-seven, so in actuality, we get there before fire, rescue. I'm not afraid to say that we do. So we usually offer life-saving, we're rendering life-saving techniques.
So you have one in each cruiser?
Yes, correct. Not in each cruiser. We have two of them. So whoever's on duty, if they're, you know, um, at least whoever's on duty has one, one or two. And in Nottingham, you're lucky if you have two people on duty, because again, you guys understand our coverage for staffing, right? But, um, but at least some of the units that are out there, even if you have three officers on, that'd be awesome, um, you have two AEDs, and they're very useful. What I'm saying is, so we need a new one at the police department, so that's where that money, um, that increase is because of the price of an AED. I'm looking into getting, there's gonna be a grant that can take care of these, so I'll try to look and see if, um, we can get some grant funding for them, because I don't think that, I mean, we, there should be something that gives us like half off or pays for them, and then people want you to be safe. They want you to have a defibrillator.
You can definitely get them through state bid pricing. I do know that.
Right.
And there's one at the community center shed, too.
Right, correct, that we, I think that's ours, too, that we help out with. Um, and, and, so does that make sense? And that's why that went up. I need an AED. It was involved in a cruiser accident, and once that happens, they don't, they don't recommend that you use it, so um, it might not work, is what I'm saying, you know?
Right, is it like, so you send that one back or something?
Yeah, I mean, we, we gotta destroy it or get rid of it, and then nobody wants it or anything, so. And, you know, Matt doesn't even know where it came, like, how old it was or where it came, you know what I mean, so. Just one of those things, right? You, you know, you, a cha- a process has to change, so I, we figured it would be best in this budget, and so depending upon what years people need them, you'll see an increase, but like I said, I'll try to get some grant funding and get them paid for. For this year, we do need one. We're down one, and, uh, so.
We just need one.
We just need one, yeah, we need one at the police department, so.
I think other than going forward for any of the other ones, that's where it will come from.
It'll be in that budget. It'll be in the EMD budget.
Okay.
And not in the fire department's budget, which apparently it was.
That didn't make sense.
I know, yeah.
How much per unit, have they? Do you know?
How much? Well, they go for about two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, but if we can get state bid pricing, we could probably, I could, I think the state bid pricing said I can get three hundred dollars off of that.
Who would do the training for those?
So we, we do, like, first aid CPR training at the fire department.
Right.
They recertify us every two years.
No, but, so.
I'm sorry, like, here?
It's instructions.
I'm just thinking because we-
Go public coming in in that situation, it talks you through.
Yeah, everyone is so easy.
So you call nine-one-one there to assist as well, but like, when you pick up the pads, when you're ready to activate the computer, tells you exactly what to do.
Yeah, it's very user-friendly.
The one that we have at work had like a video that people could watch.
And there are definitely tons of videos out there that you could just show.
Yeah, it was, you know, so.
But it is important to have. I mean, we have to have one.
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent. I don't know.
But then you're in that situ- when you're in that situation and you're trying to learn it.
Listen, I've, we've had some weird experiences on the field where the kid gets the wind knocked out of him, and that can stop your, I mean, I don't mean to be morbid, but those things can stop your heart if you're, it's in rhythm or whatever, so. You see it during football games, these young guys. It's like, oh, you know, um, but yeah, something to think about.
Even to just see a video, I agree, would be, I think, reassuring, because most people, I don't think, realize that it does talk you through it.
Right, it does talk you through it, and, yeah, so, I mean, you could probably share that video amongst some people.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We all should watch that.
Right?
We can just take one out.
Especially during budget season, right? Like, all of our blood pressures. So I'm just gonna tell, is that just me? Is that? Nottingham, our blood pressure's-
Anything else for Chief?
I mean, that, please ask me now. I hate to say, like, I, I, I'm, I'm here to answer all your dying questions about my, my budget.
That's everything we kind of-
I think it's very straightforward.
It's very straightforward. I mean, again, it's everything.
The limitations and caps.
Your three CIP items for this year, we talked about the cruiser, the drone, and the-
And the warrant articles. Yeah. And so, well, I have an idea about if the warrant articles will at least be discussed or when.
That's, that's on the planned agenda for next week's meeting. Um, we'll have to wrap up whatever doesn't get discussed tonight.
And, and one of them is not even a monitor. I mean, the changing of the wording of the special duty is just the changing of the wording of this, you know what I mean, so.
Just have to change the purpose.
Yeah, yeah, that's an easy one. That's a no-brainer. We want to use some money, right, and just, okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. That was painless, so. That, yeah, it shouldn't be.
Thank you. Um, I understand, I got a text message from Matt Cherlin confirming that he would not be here tonight, but also that Steve Rollins was also not going to be able to make it tonight, so. We can go over the highway department budget. He is proposing level funding. He had no changes for this year. He seems to be operating okay and thinks that he'll be able to continue to do so for next year. Um, so if you want, we can go over that, and then I believe I'm okay to talk about the recycling center if you want to do that, or I can just have him come in next week, so I'll leave it up.
I'm okay with that, I mean.
I would, I would like, um, Steve to come in at some point, though, to talk about
The highway department.
The highway department, roads, and road maintenance for next year and-
So what I'm not planning on is having him come in next week.
Yeah.
To deal with.
I think that would make sense.
Yeah, no, that would be great.
Steve, do you think that's okay?
Yeah.
Do you want to defer the recycling? I, I don't want to take away from his- I have plenty of budgets to present to me, so I don't mind passing those too often.
Yeah, if he can have a list of, like, roads that he'd like to, you know, if we're gonna have a warrant article for paving for next year, it'd be nice to know what he's recommending for priorities.
So would you like to move on to government buildings if we're going off the list? Okay, um, I did prepare this budget. Page, uh, page number five. So this is the, um, dump hall for all of the electricity, the fuel, oil, propane for all of the town facilities, our cleaning in this building, um, any materials that we need, toilet paper, paper towels, hand soap, cleaning supply, shoveling, mowing of the, um, general town buildings, not necessarily the field maintenance. That's all through the parks and rec. Um, so I'll go line by line. There is an increase for the town hall salad, the, the cleaning. It's a contracted service. Um, I did change companies in, I think it was March of this year. Um, so still contracted service. We have them coming in, doing service three days a week. They come in after hours, so there's no disruption to any of the events that are going on over the town offices. Uh, they're doing a wonderful job. Um, but with that being said, of course, you know, supply and demand and cost of increase there. There has been an increase. We were level-funded from when we went from a part-time, um, cleaning, I would say, like custodial staff that was on staff to, um, subcontracted service, and that happened in the default budget year. So we've pretty much left that the same, but we've been over-expending it. So I did increase that. It's running about twenty-seven to twenty-eight hundred dollars a month, so that's, again, this building, including the police department. Um, so I did increase that to thirty-three thousand, just to cover the cost that we will be anticipating for this year. Um, town hall, building, um, materials, equipment, and supplies. We had thirteen thousand dollars budgeted. Again, this kind of rolled forward when we had a part-time cleaner on staff. Um, she was keeping a, a much larger inventory of items. Now, I'm literally just ordering the items as we're getting low, so we're keeping less on hand. Um, we order most of our stock through either, you know, our general supplier, through WB Mason. We use Home Depot supplies, so we do get bulk pricing and, um-
Does the cleaner provide any of their own supplies, or?
They, they provide, um-
It's a pretty big difference.
No, actually, they don't. So I provide them, they use two products. They use bleach and Fabuloso. So if it's something that needs to be disinfected, they add bleach to the Fabuloso. Otherwise, Fabuloso will just pretty much do everything, so I buy it by the gallon, and they make it work general-purpose throughout the building. Um, we do still purchase, like, toilet cleaner and, um, mop heads.
Trash bags.
Trash bags, all of that, so I, I am keeping stock of that inventory, but initially, we didn't want to reduce it because we weren't sure what was gonna happen with the company. Some require more, some require less. This one requires a lot less than the prior company. Um, so just forecasting it based on the past two years of expenditures, I thought that was one area where we could actually reduce it, so I cut that down to five thousand.
We've only spent three thousand. Storage space, too, which we don't have.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, do we, have you wanna wait for, um, salary?
For sal-
Three fifty-two?
Yep, so that would just be if we had, like, a facilities person on staff.
Put this money in it for this year.
We spent three fifty-two, thirty-five.
Probably just in the wrong spot.
Oh, okay. I didn't get it.
There was no money budgeted, so I'm assuming that it's probably something that got coded to the wrong item. Um, mowing and shoveling is bulked into one. That was six thousand dollars. We've already, this year, spent six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, and that was primarily because we didn't have, um, our facilities person was taking care of that. Um, the shoveling aspect of it, so we had a few good snowstorms, and then the cost of mowing with a new contract is built into that, so I did bump that up a little bit.
So who will be doing the shoveling this year?
Um, I'm putting it out there right now. Either hopeful for a contracted company or somebody that might be willing to do it hourly basis. Um, Steve Rollins had a few people that might be interested that he was gonna send our way, but. So this will be for both this building, keeping all points of egress open, and obviously the main entryway. They can pretty much back drag with a plow, but we still need to make sure that all our, like, this alley port and the side doors and everything are open and accessible in case of an emergency. So it would be for here and the library. We've kind of incorporated the library into that, and, and the S.A.U. office as well.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that covers town hall and all other buildings, which is a T-H-O-B abbreviation, in case you didn't know.
I didn't.
Thanks.
Um, so again, that's up in the air. We don't know. I know John Scruton had advertised when he was the interim town administrator. He was looking for somebody around, like, twenty dollars an hour. He got zero interest. Um, so it was pretty much whoever was the first one in the building was the the person making sure, and the police department was kind of charged with keeping their access open. Last year, we were spoiled, so I'm hoping that we can find somebody that would be willing to at least keep it open and accessible to staff and the public. Um, recycling center. I left it at ten thousand dollars. This year, we spent sixteen thousand, four seventy-seven, sixty-five. We had a couple of different aspects. We did the painting of the exterior of the building, which was long overdue.
Right.
Um, we do still have the, the rear part of the garage that needs to be refastened and some other general maintenance. I got a quote from the electrician to, um, upgrade some of the lighting fixtures, both exterior and interior, to LED. Several of the light fixtures are old and not working anymore, so, um, I think that quote came in. I have it right here, if you don't mind waiting for a second. Lighting at the recycling center. Um, let me just pull that up, because I apologize, I didn't print it. It would be something that we could do out of the building maintenance expendable trust fund, however, I think we need to reserve that for larger projects coming up, like if we have to do the, the cooling system here. Um, so it was not as bad as I was expecting, so I was thinking we could pull it out of this. It was forty-nine, forty-nine fifty. So that would be replacing all interior and exterior fixtures with LED equivalent.
Oh, oh.
Labor and material. Um, so between that and fastening, and then whatever else we might need to do to that building, I think, for the most part, be in good shape. So. Um, most of the other items have just been level-funded. The five hundred dollars for the dame building, if they have any needs, the Grange building.
We spent six eighty-five.
Six eighty-five, so that's for pest control. We have a mouse problem at the Grange building, go figure, so we have a- Um, we do pest control. Yes, to keep the mice at bay. Um, so that is what comes out of that. The community, go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, I just said, I got it, thanks.
Okay. Community center, building maintenance. This is more than just building maintenance. This is our security system. So it's our alarm monitoring through Alarm Central. It's the, yeah, the security camera, the annual maintenance for that. It's pest control for this building. And of course, it includes the police station side as well. And then pretty much anything else that falls into general maintenance category. If we have, you know, a door handle that needs to be replaced or when we had to reactivate the, the fire alarm system from when we did the renovations, it's pretty much anything. So I did keep that at eighteen thousand. We've already expended thirteen thousand, four twenty-eight oh seven this year, just on those general maintenance items. Town hall building maintenance, again, the same. We, we did have a lighting fixture issue over there that had to be dealt with. So that's why we're a little bit over budget, but that's not a recurring cost. It's just, you know, money's there. We have to use it. Uh, the new fire station, it's not so new anymore, but it's opposed to the old fire station. He has had some troubles with the garage doors. There's been several maintenance calls over there. And then just some other building, they did add a washer and dryer upstairs. So there was plumbing for that and ventilation, just it was put upstairs in the bunk rooms or just outside the bunk rooms. So there, there's just been some changes that have been made there. Instead of replacing the floor, it was originally proposed that we needed to replace the floor on the first floor. We had a couple of companies come out and they said, you know, just a good buff and wax will take care of it. So that's been included in this. The, the floors are actually holding up really good. They still look pretty good.
Most of that's those, the garage, because they came out twice, right, for the doors?
So again, those are expenditures that, until it breaks.
Hopefully one time.
So I did bump that up a little bit, just because now we're talking. It's not new so, new so much anymore. And it's two thousand and seven, I think it was constructed. So, I mean, we have a piece of siding that is kind of flapping around. We need somebody that it's, because it's metal siding, it needs a special tool. So like, we need somebody to come out and take care of that. They were able to get the gutters cleaned out, but I think that there's still some improvements there that need to be made. So there, there's a laundry list of things that could be done. So just trying to prepare for those rather than, you know, fixing is that it happens. And the Band-Aid approaches, we're trying to be a little bit more proactive in planning. Highway building, I kept the same. I think the only thing that's really planned over there is they're looking to add a man door to the rear of the building. Right now, there's the man door on the front, but the only access from the rear, and it was something that the safety committee brought up, is to have some type of a man door back there. So I think they're actually going to do that internally. But again, you know, it's an expenditure. They'll have to buy a door and frame it out and cut through the concrete. Library building maintenance, for the most part, they take care of anything that pertains to the library operations, but if something should come up. You know, we replaced the septic last year or the leach field. We have some HVAC issues right now that we're working through. We just replaced their furnace that was taken care of last week. But, um, who knows? Again, buildings aren't getting any younger. Again, these are just mostly carried forward from prior years. The electric is the electric. The town hall electric, it shows that it's slightly over, but there is actually a reimbursement that comes back in from the SAU office. So that will be offsetting. I did increase it a little bit just because the electric supply rates are going up. They, we have like that huge increase that seems to be taking place in July now. So I'm just trying to prepare for those instances. The new fire station electric, again, you know, we have solar panels.
We've already spent.
Seventy-three, eighty-two, eighty-four.
Yeah.
I only increased it. So the year-to-date expenditures were updated today. I thought increasing it to five thousand was going to be safe.
Maybe that needs to be eight. At least, then probably nine.
So maybe we need to increase that and then maybe.
Couple of months left. Wow.
Yeah.
That's a huge increase.
I'm actually just going to look back.
Yeah, why, why is that so?
Yeah, that does sneak, I mean, I know rates are going up.
I'm just going to look back and see what the end of the year was for last year. To see if that was much different. Fire station electric. Yeah, something seems off there.
Maybe some of it's coming from the community center.
Yeah. That one's way down.
The only one that's, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, right, maybe some bills got billed to the wrong building.
All right, so we'll look into that one before we propose any increases.
Between the, the fire department and the community center. Because that was budgeted for twenty.
And I think the community center has been a little bit on the higher side for several years and we've just been cautious about reducing it. We, I think we've reduced it by a couple thousand each year. And I actually proposed to reduce it significantly this year, just based on the trend.
Right, right, but let's just make sure we get the fire department.
Suspicious.
If that's the case and if they're correctly billed, you know, the right categories, then we definitely need to increase the fire department.
Okay. I think the other one seemed okay.
Yeah, those.
Down through the Grange, the light of the Smoke Street pit. This is pretty much recycling center, yeah.
And the electric at Marston is for the well.
Yes, correct. So when the irrigation system is running, that's the well pump. We've, we eliminated the, it was a portable heater in the shed and then the shed wasn't well insulated. So we're pretty much heating the outdoors, so we got rid of that. And. No.
Running the system.
I believe the irrigation system will be winterized here anytime, if not already. We should start see that go back to like the base level thirty-eight dollar a month charge.
By February.
Hopefully. The heat, starting at line one thirty-one down through one thirty-eight, there were two bids that came in for the fuel oil and propane, but they came into my email. I was on vacation. Nobody had access to it. So I have those rescheduled and I've already contacted the two vendors that provided their quotes and asked them to make sure that they were reflective of Monday's date. So you'll be opening those on November third, year-round meeting. So I did just plug in figures in hopes that we'll still have competitive pricing for propane and heating oil supply. But again, just based on what we've done for consumption this year with our contracted pricing, I did make some adjustments. Again, just in an effort to try to cut some of these budgets, to absorb some of the increases where we need them otherwise. So these may have to change as of Monday.
Okay.
Depending on what the pricing falls at. The community center phone and internet, ten thousand, five hundred. I think I'd reported at the beginning of the year, I've been working with Comcast to try to consolidate all of the, the phone and the internet. I mean, right now, each building is, is piecemealed on different plans. So it's a matter of pulling those all together. So that should be wrapped up by the end of this year. So we should start seeing some cost savings. So I, instead of going up for the little bit of overage that we've had this year, I'm keeping it at the same that we budgeted for in twenty-five. The dumpster is for the waste management dumpster that we have here for our general trash, plus the cardboard recycling container that we have here at this building. And that pretty much sums it up. But as long as the electric isn't out of whack and our bids for the fuel oil and propane come in at good prices, I am proposing a three-point-seven-two percent decrease, which will hopefully be helpful, otherwise in the budget. It's not much, but it's something.
Reimbursed for a fire station heat, right?
Yes, the old fire station, so part of our lease that we have with the tenants, they, we do it through the, the town's contracted pricing, but they reimburse us for the bills. I'm going to start back to page one. The only thing I had to discuss with you is your stipend of selectmen. I left it at five thousand dollars. It was at one point fifteen thousand dollars and it's been reduced over the years with the default budget because you so generously spread that wealth across the rest of the, the operating budget. So I was assumptive and assuming that we would continue that process if you're all okay with that. Selectment salary is five thousand dollars. It's been.
Going down.
It's been going down. Yeah, no, it's one thousand per person. It used to be three thousand per select board member and it was reduced during the, when we went to a default budget. And we've just kind of maintained at a thousand dollars per member.
I know.
Yes. And moving forward. It is a thankless job. As far as salaries, the biggest change that I have is the secretarial. That includes our administrative assistant, who actually, who also acts as our assessing coordinator, Nancy. But built into that salary line is also the minutes taker that transcribes your select board meetings remotely. And also I have added some clerical support staff. I have Marion Friend Gray in the office. She's working about, on average, about ten hours a week right now, just kind of helping with some of the, the file sorting and data preservation efforts that I'm really trying to work towards. And she's also just helping out anywhere else that we need help in the office, whether it's, you know, filing away the accounts payable or pulling together the, the meeting packets. So it's just been very helpful. So that position is reflective, or that one-line item is reflective of technically three positions. Nope, I was just disclosing that the, the secretarial salaries include, it's not just for the, the secretary. It's our recording secretary, it's the administrative assistant, assessing coordinator and clerical support staff. Outside of that, I put in a plug figure for merit compensation. The police department has already included an increase in their department budget as they've done in the past. So this figure was at fifty thousand for two thousand and twenty-four. I put in a plug figure just to kind of have something in there to offer as a cost, a living or a merit pay increase for the bulk of all departments, excluding the police department, because she's already got it calculated. But that figure is fluid to the point of I was trying not to propose a four percent or higher increase. So thirty thousand happened to work within the rest of the figures. In this budget, I also showed what was approved as a warrant article in two thousand and twenty-five for the newsletter. I added that back into the executive office budget, so that was ten thousand dollars that I was adding to the bottom line. But outside of that, there isn't much change to the other items, like the software licensing, the service contracts, advertising, office supplies. Everything's fairly stable. There might be some items that are slightly overspent where they're not on other line items, so.
Happy machine leases.
Yeah. So that's part of a, a five-year lease purchase that we're in. And of course, as we get further in the lease, the costs increase.
Yeah, select everything.
I look at it as that should probably just be part of the service contracts and equipment line item, but it's got a special line item of its own, so I've left it as it was for my predecessor.
Because you can't have too many line items.
Do you have any questions about any of the other lines specifically?
I know.
Good.
You talked about the town clerk already. So page two, going back to the finance administration, which you've already heard from the tax collector. Just to kind of fill in the blanks, I think the only change that I've made our annual audit, we've budgeted sixteen thousand dollars. We put it out for, we put out for proposals at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. We didn't get any auditing firms to respond, including the, the present audit firm. So our hope is that they're going to continue to audit our financials. But I do anticipate, because we're not contracted, we're on a year-to-year basis, that they're going to have some type of an increase. So I tried to be modest and say that it was going to go up fifteen hundred dollars. We will know, they're supposed to be coming back out on site next Monday to finalize the two, the two thousand and twenty-four audit. So I'm hoping once we get that wrapped up next week, we'll have an idea of what their cost of services for the two thousand and twenty-five audit, which is right around the corner, will be. So again, that, that might change. I did reduce some other line items. So the, the budget committee recording secretary, we're using the same recording secretary that does the planning board and zoning board minutes. And of course, the budget committee has not been extending their meetings till one AM more recently. So they've been more short, concise, you know, an hour, two hours, three hours tops. So I'm, I'm, was, I felt comfortable reducing that line item for the recording secretary.
So grateful.
The postage is strictly for the mailing of the tax bills. Tracy already talked to you about the other certified. And Lee notices that she has to send out all other postage is like when we send out the, the bills, the bill payments bi-weekly, that all comes out of the executive office postage. So this is just strictly for anything the tax collector sends out. The trustees of the trust funds get, you know, a hundred dollars apiece for their services to their town. The treasurer is a stipend basis, so that hasn't changed. Just about everything else is tax collector related, with the exception of when you get into the software licensing. So that includes Avatar Tax Collect and our accounting software support, which is going to be coming up. It's a CIP item. Our accounting software is BMSI. They've since, since moved to G-Works, which is a cloud-based software. We, of course, would have to upgrade to that software, so there would be a cost associated with that. But the estimated annual maintenance and support contract right now is about forty-five hundred dollars. I've reached out to a couple of different companies and I've been through product demonstrations. We're looking at annual maintenance. If we move forward with a new company, we'd have to, of course, buy the software. So that's one whole cost. But the annual support is about fifty-two hundred dollars a year. So I built that new figure into the software licensing in anticipation of having to upgrade the software. It's inevitable, like I said, I mean, they've moved forward to the cloud. Eventually, they're going to get to the point where they're not going to support our old, you might as well call it DOS-based accounting software. And just moving into the cloud-based software, it allows our department heads to be more interactive, see their expenditures live. It's, it's just, it's, it's something, it's a transition that we have to move right now. We're pulling a lot of reports into Excel and making, we're molding them to produce the data that we need it to. So it's, it's extra steps that are taken by either Betsy or myself. And sometimes it's, you know, it's open to data entry error and it's just a forward process. So that has been included in there. And that's pretty much it. The rest of the stuff was all Tracy's that she had talked about. And that's pretty much it. The rest of the stuff was all Tracy's that she had talked about. For the new software. I'm estimating right now between $20,000 and $25,000. So that would be a rollover of five years' worth of data and then actually purchasing the software and implementing it with new training and the various modules that we need for accounts payable and general ledger.
We have $30,000 in CIP for that.
We do have 30, because I was figuring in the first year of support. Any questions on finance?
Yeah.
No, do you have?
No, I, I, you have other stuff, right? You're still going over, before we go over to our CIP stuff?
I have like five more budgets to go through.
Yeah.
Assessing, we don't have a board of assessors anymore, so that's where this budget was. I still consider this part of the executive office now. What's in here is dues and conferences. We do pay to New Hampshire assessing officials. It's a listserv that Nancy can go in and she can ask questions to other assessing coordinators, tax-related or assessment-related questions. And because we're a dues-paying member, we can actually vote on who the board members are, et cetera, et cetera, but it's that plus our Avatar assessing software, which is our database management for all townwide assessed valuations. That is through Avatar. Tracy had reported earlier, they're, they haven't put out their request for software renewals for next year, but they did say, you know, probably a 3% to 5% increase. So I budgeted for the worst at the 5% increase. A contract assessor, we had a five-year contract with Avatar Associates to do our contract assessing work. That contract expires at the end of this month, I'm sorry, the end of this year, December 31st. I did already reach out to them to see if they would provide us with a renewal contract. And they're just trying to get our revaluation finalized, and then we should have that information. So I did put a plug figure in there, again, estimating that everything goes up. The $28,000 was year five of a five-year contract, so we'll be hopeful that $30,000 is appropriate. Mapping for the, that covers both the paper town tax maps that you can go into the office and look at, as well as the maintenance of the online mapping, the GIS. So we had played some catch-up this year, there were a couple of years that were not updated. And so you'll see that we've expended some additional money, but we're on track now. So I think the $7,750 will be good, and that, that is reflective of their
No, that's good, that we're all caught up basically. Excellent.
And under the revaluation, we did raise $20,000 in the operating budget this year, just because we failed to appropriate the, the fifth year of the revale savings in the capital reserve fund. So the $72,477, again, that will be coming forward to you once I have the final bill for the revale for reimbursement from that capital reserve fund. And then that will be a zero line item. And we will have to do a capital reserve fund, we'll have to add to the capital reserve fund in 2026 to start building for the next revale in five years.
Right, it's the same capital reserve fund, so there's probably a couple bucks in it.
You're right, whatever we gained in interest, maybe, if we're lucky.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So that budget looks really good. I mean, that was proposed at a 27.97% decrease, but it's because of the the revaluation moving out of there.
Right, that's a big
So we're taking from one pot and it'll be in another. Any questions on assessing?
It all counts in the 4%.
It does. Legal services. I think, I actually did propose an increase on that, but I think that was just based on where we're at at present. Again, we don't know what we're going to require legal representation for. We do still have an ongoing cases being handled by insurance-assigned legal services, but Dale's had a lot of code enforcement and other violations that he's had to deal with on his side, so.
We're already a little over budget.
We are.
A couple months left.
So I mean, that is one area, again, like you tried, based on like what we have to this point, we could probably keep it level funded at $30,000 if we were looking for $5,000 to cut. Personnel administration. Health insurance. We have two plans that we offer to our employees. The employees do pay, they do contribute to whatever they, whether they require a single or a couple or a family plan, they either pay 10% or 15% of a contribution to that. So the two plans that we offer, one of them is a higher deductible of $3,000. That one, that plan is actually going up 15.8%. Of that 15.8%, they've added a 5.3 service charge, capital service charge. That's pretty much across the board for most insurances. The second plan that we offer, which is the lower deductible, higher cost to the employee, is going up 9.2%. So just based on our census data, we have a couple, I think we have a handful of employees on the higher deductible, and then three-quarters or more on the lower deductible plan. So like the net increase is going to be about 10% overall. When we went through and we trimmed the budget last year to meet the 4% tax cap, we took into effect the, the current staffing levels. We had at least two vacancies in the fire department. We had a vacancy in the police department, so I don't want to shortchange the fact that we were able to maintain full staffing levels for most of this year. And I want to think that we're going to continue that momentum into 2026, so. I've budgeted based on the increase at the full staffing levels, which is a significant increase. We've gone from 460, let's say $467,000 to $600,000. So this is a conversation that needs to take place. These rates just came in a week and a half ago while I was on vacation. I have a very short window of time where I can reach out to health trust and see what other plans are available to us. We might have to have the discussion about maybe increasing the contributions or shifting the plans. There's a bunch of scenarios that I've been running and I just don't know what's the appropriate one, but I, I at least want to reach out to health trust and say like, is there another option out there? Like what are other, everybody is seeing this, so we're in this pool of all municipalities in the state, we're a small employer, but we actually get a large employer rating because we're all pooled together as likes and kind. So if we went out to Anthem directly and tried to purchase, we wouldn't get the rates that we do. We get a very premium health insurance offering to the employees at a very good discount, but unfortunately, we are seeing insurance as the last ball to drop with increases. We've been warned. So with that being said, that is the bulk of the increase, New Hampshire Retirement. We pay the rates that are set, they, they went into effect July 1st of 2025. They're good through June 30th of 2027 unless they have a rate increase next year, so. New Hampshire Retirement is, there's two different percentages, one for police and one for fire. As far as all of their full-time employees, it's a 457B contribution, which is up to a 6% match the employees. So those have all been calculated based on the present salaries across all town departments. And then the FICA and the Medicare, again, it's based on fully staffed at current wage levels, and I did I did adjust the, the other benefits, the life insurance, the short and long-term disability. Those had minimal change. What, the, the insurance rates? Yes, but not to the amount of increase that we're seeing this year. I think last year was probably the highest, around 7%.
And then I, I know we talked about a couple years ago, potentially adding the pension, the Hampshire pension as a benefit.
The New Hampshire retirement.
Right.
So we can of course bring that back up for discussion. It is something, it would be in a properly noticed meeting that you could discuss it. Moving forward, all you have to do is sign a resolution as a select board, if that's a route that you choose to go. Right now, for the 457B plan, which is a government-sponsored 401K, the town provides 6% matching benefit. That's in the, the employees portion is totally elective. To move to New Hampshire Retirement, it would be a mandatory 7% contribution for anybody that rolls into it. And then the employer portion, yeah, the employer portion for group one, which would be all other employees other than police and fire is I have it printed, I swear. Employer portion is 12.75%. So it'd be double plus. Now, the way that this works, because you are not group one-sponsored right now, and because we're already, we're already participating in the 457B plan, sometimes it's not feasible if you have somebody that's only got like three, four, or five years, they'll never become vested in the New Hampshire Retirement program, so. When you roll into the New Hampshire Retirement for group one, not all employees have to go if they're already part of that 457B. But when they leave that position and you're replacing that position, it becomes a mandatory requirement. So that does give us a little bit of flexibility, we could almost phase into it where it would be, you know, something we could go to the, the employees. So it would be the town office staff, so three full-time positions there. It would be the three full-time positions in the rec. department, five in the highway department, and the administrative assistant in the police department. So you're talking, what did I just add up there, three, six? I have fingers and toes, 10? 10 potential positions that could open up. I think it would be extremely advantageous, especially when you're talking about replacing in the highway department, because a lot of them are either moving over from other towns or even from the state, and they're either vested or they're close. Anybody hired after 2011 needs 20 years of creditable service. Anybody hired before that only needed 10 years, so. The New Hampshire Retirement system. So it does become, unfortunately, we've seen it in a couple of instances, hiring for when we're looking for the highway department director, as well as other employees. I mean, we've got to the interview process and we've had people that have just turned their position down as a result of us not being part of the New Hampshire Retirement for group one. So it is something for consideration, but it's not calculated into this. Not until you're ready to move forward with that conversation. I'm sorry, I went off on a tangent there. So as this budget, or this portion of the budget is proposed because of the health insurance, it's a 15.7% increase. So again, it's going to require more conversation, more reach out to New Hampshire Health Trust about plan offerings and see where we go. But the one thing that I will say is that the benefits package that the town offers is
Something to keep you clear.
It is. I would not recommend changing it. We already went through planning board, zoning board, so let's move on to insurance, which is on page six. On the trend of increasing insurances, we got our Primex rate renewals on October 15th, so the workers' comp insurance, it's based on claims history and just generally, that didn't go up too bad. It was about $2,500, which as Vaughn reported, we had a cruiser accident. We had a cruiser fire. We had a highway department truck that was in an accident. The insurance is there, it's great coverage. Sorry, that was property liability, I'm talking about workers' comp. We haven't had a whole lot of workers' comp claims.
I caught the transition.
As a whole. The property liability, on the other hand, so workers' comp didn't go up that much. We didn't have a lot of claims. We haven't lately, which is very good, we're being safe. But the property liability, on the other hand, did increase. We went from $84,402 to $107,733. And we did have a $3,000 plug figure in there for insurance other slash NHMA. Betsy and I went through, I think it was 2016 was the last time, actually. I think it might even have been prior to that, that we've actually expended from this line item. We're not even sure it still applies, so I just said, we haven't used it for at least the past two years. It needs to offset some of the other insurance overages, so we wiped that line to.
Insurance would have been coming through NHMA.
I'm not really sure. The only thing that I
Wonder if maybe they had the NHMA membership as part of that, the dues maybe?
I don't know, because I think it's always been
I don't know. You don't really buy, unless maybe they did offer some sort of insurance years ago.
But in any case, we're not utilizing it, so. I got rid of it.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. We don't need it.
So there's another significant, significant increase of 15.84%.
Is Primex like the only carrier that municipalities use?
Primex is one, it is the largest in the state of New Hampshire municipalities. There are I know Davis and Hole has offered workers' comp property liability trust. I know they were, I think they were like the second to Primex. I haven't followed them for at least six or seven years, so I don't know where they're at in the, the grand scheme of things. Again, they're, you know, kind of like that large pool provider.
Right. Neither way, we had claims, that's what. Spend the money on premiums and then you use it and they go up.
Any questions on insurance?
Save $3,000.
The building inspector was not on the agenda, but that budget is on page eight. And I think for the most part, Dale said that he wasn't looking for anything specific. I did add in an increase for the Avatar building permit software, again, estimating a 5% increase, and we are currently paying him IRS rate mileage reimbursement for personal use of his vehicle to complete the inspections as he needs to, but as Vaughn reported, we have a cruiser that is going to be coming over, so he won't be using his personal vehicle anymore, so I've kind of shifted that from a mileage to a, we're going to have to at least pay vehicle maintenance, whether it's, you know, tires, oil changes, whatever the vehicle's going to need, so.
When is that vehicle coming over to us?
I think Yeah, it's being de-outfitted and then we're going to have to change the lights and put a new town seal on it. Make it look less like a police cruiser. So probably by the first of the year. I'm assuming at the latest.
Yeah, well, I would assume it'd be before that, but.
So that vehicle will also be available if we have any trainings to, to go to. The building permit software, we have an annual software support for all of our programs. So that's pretty much in a nutshell.
They got their fingers in everything.
They do.
They sure do.
They all talk very well together. Building permits dumps into the assessing side. The assessing side dumps into the tax collect. Any questions on that? Another one that was a small decrease. I don't think there was, we, we updated the codebooks because saving New Hampshire adopted
Actually, sorry, go back to the mileage.
Yes.
So that should be zeroed out then, right?
No, I changed, I'm actually changing it over to a building maintenance.
Vehicle maintenance. Okay, got it. I, I saw the note after I was questioning it. Okay, that's fine.
We'll create a new line item for it. We'll create a new line item for it.
They're gonna have to do some relettering.
To general assistance, so page eleven. There was also no changes proposed to the um, animal control. She gets a monthly stipend. She does a phenomenal job.
She does.
So general assistance, uh, so this is the town welfare. Uh, we have a welfare director that works per diem as needed and only bills us for her time. Uh, we did have a situation, we had a homeless situation where we had to put somebody in a hotel for um, the first third of the year this year. So again, you know, we have to have something to be able to, we have to have an appropriation to be able to expend from it. In this instance, we actually expended almost ten thousand dollars because there wasn't a shelter option available, um, you know.
We haven't spent, we haven't spent that much.
No, we haven't for several years. So you, you hope that when the need presents itself, it is there and available to use. And in this case it was. Unfortunately, that person is now off of Nottingham's obligation. Onto hopefully better situation. Um, so level funding for general assistance, again, we have to have something to be able to provide when it's needed. And that has been pretty much, it's been pretty well consolidated over the years. I think the budget committee went through. There used to be
Two years ago.
Yeah, there used to be individual items, so we'll probably just clean those up. So it shortens that department up.
And nothing was used for the, um, fair?
She has not reported time. I think she might do it by the end of the year. Moving on to social services, you'll see notes in the right-hand column. I did reach out. There were four agencies that I hadn't received a request for twenty twenty six, so I assumed level funding. I did get um, ready rides today and it was level funded for fifteen hundred. So assuming that there are no other changes, um, there were see, the child advocacy center has requi- requested um, twice as much as they normally do. And I did um, forward to you copies of all the individual requests and there's printed copies there if you want to review them. Generally, they'll provide the statistical data, what kind of services they provide to Nottingham or are available to Nottingham residents. But these are all, um, we'll just call them like pre-qualified. They've been funded by the town for several years. We do get them from time and, from time to time from um, a lot of, you know, broader reached organizations. And there's really been no determination as to how they, they request funding. Um, a lot of towns will require them to petition the townspeople and go from there. And then once they um, once they are successful in obtaining funding, then they just become part of the organization. But I think the only one that I've received outside of that might be Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So, um, that was one of my questions as to how you would like to handle new, new agencies coming in requesting funding. If you think that would be an appropriate way to put it on as a warrant article or to require them to obtain twenty-five signatures for petition.
How is it done in other towns when you?
Usually either a petition or it goes on as a warrant article for the townspeople to decide whether or not they want to support them or not.
I think probably a petition would be a good idea based on other people like talking about these in general and why did we do it?
I think one thing that would be helpful, and I think especially for our budget committee liaison here, is if you could extrapolate from the letters, the Nottingham data. So how many Nottingham residents use ready, ready rides, you know, and if they're in here, it might be easier.
Yeah, I, I, I have not found that a lot of, a lot of them will quote Rockingham County figures.
In the letters, they had Nottingham numbers.
They do have some of them.
But the ones that do at least have that.
We should require that, honestly. And, and what I'm familiar with is a, is a process where it's actually, this is kind of grant money in a sense. And, you know, there's a small committee that reviews it and, and kind of sees are there new organizations that might be, I mean, these are all wonderful organizations, we know that. Um, but are there new organizations that might better serve the townspeople? Um, are there organizations that used to but aren't serving?
Well, I
Not wild about this.
I noticed like some of the names are a little different too, like
Yeah, some of them have
Community Action Partnership. I think that's the RCC AP. Is that right?
Yes, Rockingham County Community Action Program.
Right, but they changed their name to CAPHR.
And waypoint change.
And, right, so, um,
Things change.
Right, and the Rockingham City Nutrition, I think that's the Meals on Wheels.
Correct.
So it's, it's just uh, making sure that we have the information out there so people recognize what they actually are.
Yeah, it's important. And I, again, a lot of them are very worthy of supporting, um, but it would be interesting to have the comparison of how many Nottingham residents, because there are other towns in Rockingham County that have a lot more services from some of these and should be contributing more. Pretty small town. I, and again, I can't say they're all worthwhile and they're great, but in terms of what serves our population the best and to require that they provide a little bit more demographic information.
I've had towns that have requested them to come in specifically and present to the budget committee for those reasons. Some of them do it annually.
I'd just like to have better demographic information.
I mean, Alan could
Yeah, I can reach out to them.
Yeah, yeah.
To provide that.
Thank you for your boilerplate letter. What a specific to Nottingham here.
Or maybe even for, you know, to, to do that starting next year or something, you know, to have kind of a form letter, but rather than, than have it more equal, not have it so much that they're soliciting us for contributions for sometimes we're not sure exactly what services they're providing, even though they're providing great services and are to some of our neighbors, but rather soliciting them from us of what we need and bringing in more help. I think especially, you know, with the possibility of more social services may be needed, seems likely that we may be a little bit more discerning about it.
Yeah, that's a great point.
So how do you handle this? That's, that's the issue right now, right?
I, I think probably, you know, if, if they're serious about requesting, and the one for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, I think it was, it was small. It was like seven hundred and fifty dollars, but you know, still, I mean, um,
It is hard because they're all worthwhile, you know, I mean, they're all, you don't want to cut them, but
How do they impact our taxpayers?
So if you had them out there in the community soliciting their services to, and getting twenty-five signatures, then that gives you that.
But at least have a little bit more control. I mean, some of them, I, I think, um, a couple of them, I mean, they're, they're very professional and they provide those and they provide some demographic information. But others are just kind of like, gee, we'd love to, we could really use your twenty-five hundred. And you're like, yeah, of course you could, but sadly, what can you do for us? What are you doing for us? And there are new organizations out all the time or organizations that combine. Happy to look a little bit closely at that too.
Anything else in regard to social services? Yeah, any other items, Ellen?
No, I think that covers it. I have
So then we'll have highway and recycling next week. And start talking about the warrant articles.
And do you want to talk about?
Your CIP stuff?
CIP stuff, yes.
You want to do that next week when we talk about the warrant articles?
Just a few things for administration.
Administration's small. We had, we had the finance software.
Yep, so you got the finance software. Um, so you had thirty thousand in there, but that's probably only twenty-five if you put the five in the budget. Okay, um, you have AC replacement of thirty thousand.
Correct.
Have
Air conditioning for this building and for the police station. So we have three condensers that are out that need to be replaced.
The um, accounting software. So, okay, so it should only be twenty-five thousand after the five thousand that's already in the budget for the maintenance piece of it. Um, the AV equipment update, so that should come out of the cable franchise fees. So you have twenty thousand for that. The resurf, uh, sorry, no, that's next year. Um, or sorry, that's the year after. The last thing for next year is the solar panel system, which we have a hundred and eighteen thousand in there, but there's like a big question of, we need to talk to those people.
I, I am going to request, they were just here doing some more maintenance on our system today, so I'm gonna request that they actually come out and present to the select board and probably introduce the CIP committee and the budget committee as well if they wanna
That would be, yeah, great to have that come.
I think we all need to understand twenty twenty-five was the year that we were able to purchase the system outright if we wanted to from the lease. But what obligation does that then put the town, on the town as far as, now that I'm starting to see regular maintenance? Um, we had an array that went down earlier this summer. I don't remember, I don't remember what the repair was because this was scheduled while I was on vacation, but they came out and did another major repair today. So I, I think it's time to have somebody here and say like, you know, for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, this is what we're gonna get versus the savings, like whatever that will be. So
Solar, solar panel.
And so it's for both the community center and the fire station because they were done within a year of each other, I believe.
So that hundred and eighteen's for both systems?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's actually better.
That's my understanding. And again, I'm rolling forward something that was there for my predecessor, so.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to come out in the next quarter before budget season's done.
Okay, so I'll try to get in here before the end of the year.
Okay.
What's their name again? Just saw them, I saw them.
New something, I wonder.
Solar revision.
Revision, thank you.
Revision, right.
Visions all the way.
Just saw their truck today and I wondered.
So it was, um, it was something that we did not put on for a warrant article for two thousand twenty-five, so proverbial kick the can down the road. It became a twenty twenty-six.
Well, I, I think it depends on what
What it's gonna cost us out of pocket.
Right, what, what they tell us. And the four percent tax cap.
So there are a few adjustments that I have to make to this worksheet. I'll have those ready for next week for highway and recycling and then hopefully we'll have the bottom number to start.
From what I could see in the sheet, I don't think the election section was updated.
No, and it, so I did watch, um, I watched last week's meeting and I started to plug in the figures. The only thing that I could get out of Dawn's presentation was we needed eighty-eight hundred dollars for the election workers to cover the three elections next year. And then it looked like twelve hundred dollars for, um, the, the election setup.
Yeah, she has, so she can, she handed out.
And I, I was looking for a copy that night.
But I'm sure she could email you a copy of what she had.
Yeah, she had given me one before, because we had a little bit of a conversation before the meeting until I got completely cut off from Nottingham halfway through meditation. The elections budget. Um, it was eight, eighty-eight hundred dollars for the election workers to cover the three elections for next year. And then twelve hundred dollars for the, um, it was to
Poll pass?
Yeah.
Poll pass they wanted to do on this year's.
It was the program, the election programming that they have to do to get the ballots set up for the system. So it was like, so I was thinking it was like the, the moderator salary, the eighty-eight hundred dollars and then the twelve hundred dollars for the programming. And I think that was it, but I just wanted to run it by Dawn and make sure that covered everything. And the other question that I was hoping to answer for you tonight was about the printing. Because a portion of that was the programming setup this year, twelve hundred dollars got put into that printing line. And then there was like another six thousand five hundred dollars and change. And I don't know if that was the cost of printing the ballots altogether or what it was, because it was something that got moved from a prior line item.
Okay.
It was like, it was a budget adjustment. So I have to check with Betsy on that.
Okay.
And I didn't get an answer before.
Conversation about us printing the school ballots as well.
Yes, the, the town is, well, and that was one of the conversations that Dawn and I started to have is, and I think she presented it to you as well, as to whether or not the, the school starts kicking in some of the costs, because right now the town is essentially taking all the costs. Moderator, the town clerk's duties, uh, the printing of the ballots. They do reimburse us for their portion of the town report. But I think that's it. I think that's the only thing that they've physically been billed for since the SAU broke up.
Okay. Anything else? Do you need not public?
No, I do not.
All right. Would you like a motion to adjourn?
I would.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second, all in favor? She carries. Good night Nottingham.